Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, April 1st, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park.
Everybody, please, we're starting.
Hi.
Go.
Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, April 1st, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kerzak, can you please call this meeting's order?
Yes, this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Publics Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the Municipal Bulletin Board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before the Board. Fire exits are located on east and west sides of the council chambers as well as the back of the building. I will ask anyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of the meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV for your viewing pleasure in the near future. Please join me, plenely.
I'll now take roll call. James Bonanno.
Right.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
Eric Galloppo.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Mayor Moore is absent. Daniel Shinameo.
Here.
Jennifer Sauter is absent. Vice Chair Mike Gunin.
Here.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Here.
All right, the first item we have is a resolution for approval of 1201 Memorial Avenue Redevelopment Plan. There was a presentation that was given to us by Ms. McManus where there were some modifications. Anyone have any concerns before we approve the resolution? Okay. All right, you want to do roll call for approvals? Oh, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
Say that again.
James Bonanno.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo.
Yeah.
Jennifer Sauter is absent. Vice Chair Mike Gunin.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Yes.
Okay, next item that we have is the Main Street Redevelopment. Oh, no, no, that's not true. We have the 614 Cookman. We've asked them to come back. The Asbury Park Brewery. Excellent. Very good. Thank you for coming back. I'm sorry that we had to pull you back in.
That's okay. Just up for the record, Madam Chair, Richard Tilton, T-I-L-T-O-N. I'm an attorney in Allenhurst, New Jersey. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant. I was not at the hearing in February 26th. I did review the hearing.
Okay.
A few times.
Good. Good.
As I understand it, there was a question as to the actual size of the tenant space that's to be occupied. Is that correct?
There was a question of, there was perhaps a misunderstanding. It's where I personally understood it as the frontage would be four, there are four storefronts.
Correct.
My understanding, and maybe it's a misunderstanding, that the brewery was taking on two of those locations. That's why we did the approval for a 10-foot sign versus a 5-foot sign. That was perhaps a misunderstanding, but it sounded as though, when I went to another meeting on the subsequent day, I saw that there were other people. There were going to be four tenants.
Right.
And I thought there were only going to be three.
Okay.
So that's why I have asked you to come back.
Perfect. Okay, Mr. Serpico, I have just a couple of exhibits to mark and under the heading of "Pictures Worth a Thousand Words," I think. The first exhibit that I'm going to offer, I think it's, was the applicant pocket marked over, do you know?
No.
So this will be?
This would be, did we have anything more that that gave?
I don't think you did.
I believe so.
I don't think so.
This would be A1.
There was one thing. There was this, I think this depiction?
Right in front of me.
Yeah.
Pardon me.
I believe it was this one.
And I believe we also wanted my report because we had to give it to the applicant.
Yes.
Right.
Correct.
I noticed that.
This looks like P2. Yeah, we had to use our margin. Let's make this, what do you have? Yeah, let's make this A1.
Okay, so A1, and I'm going to hand these out to the Board. A1 is a schedule from the applicant's leasehold, and it shows the footprint of their store relative to the remaining balance of the building. And then appended to it is page five of Mrs. Miller's report that shows the elevation of the building. It seems as though the Board was making reference to that back and forth during the dialogue. So I wanted to put those together so you have that as a reference. And then the next exhibit would be A2, and that is 11 photographs. The first three of the photographs are of the premises in question. It's the subject store, two different shots of that, and the elevation of the entire building. The remaining photos. Me. I'll qualify myself. God help us. So then photographs four through 11 are pictures of the Cookman area, the Cookman Avenue core retail area. There was a lot of testimony, questions back and forth about signs, blade signs, signs of different shapes, et cetera. So we're going to talk about that just ever so briefly. So if I could.
Yeah, primary issue.
I know what the primary, yeah. Yeah.
Go down that, I don't go down that road.
All right. I hear you. I almost gave you mine. Do you need one, Jacque, or? Yes, that would help. That would help. Brian Durand, D-R-I-A-N-D-U-R-A-N-B.
Donna Rowland, Board Planner.
Okay, Mr. Durand, I'm showing you what's marked as A1. If you would describe to the Board what it is, your space, and how it relates to the rest of the building.
First of all, thank you for coming back so we can figure this whole thing out. So this is the entire building of 614 Cookman. There are now four tenants. We occupy the top space that's on the eastern wall. It's about 32, what is it, 3275 square foot. Next to us, if you're going from east to west, is a company by the name of Vidia. Vidia is going to occupy that entire space up to the back and then majority of the entire back of the building, plus the second floor balcony. The next one with that middle wall that went up probably since the last time I was here, this is a new space. Nobody definitely knows what's going in there. There's been a lot of rumors of what's going in there, but I don't know what is actually going in there. The final one on the bottom is the one called The Big Bear. They're an ice cream shop. And just to clear, you know, what I had said, because we watched the video, we had said that we are occupying a bigger space. We are occupying a bigger space by square footage, and we are occupying a bigger space than The Big Bear by storefrontage. That's what I was trying to explain during our last one, just because we do have a bigger space specifically if you're talking about The Big Bear, which is the only person who's in there right now. Other than that, it's just construction material and stuff all over.
And then the second page, just so we're clear, this is the building elevation from page five of the planner's report. I'm just going to ask if you would, I'm noticing that the door is all the way to the far east, to the left, and if you would just talk about that versus where you propose to put the sign. I noticed that the other signs are all, appear to be overall oriented over the doors. I don't believe in your instance, that's really a possibility. So if you would talk about that.
Sure. After, you know, you guys gave us your recommendations, I agreed with, I think it was Councilwoman Ms. Clayton, saying that, you know, could you make a 10-foot and put it in the center of the building and attach it to the bottom of the soffit? In doing that, you know, we're perfectly fine with that. It makes sense. It's big enough at the 10-foot size to be able to clearly read Asbury Park Brewery. All right, one of our, the other tenant, it's Big Bear. I know it sounds silly, but it's less letters. Asbury Park Brewery takes up a large size. So we were going to put it by your recommendation, a 10-foot sign directly on the soffit, attached to the building, in the dead center of our space.
And by that, well, the dead center, would it be centered on the window panels or centered, where would you propose?
We're now looking at A2, if you would. So if you see there's this, it's gypsum board or whatever you want to call it, it would actually, you see with that one, it's a square hole with a, it looks like a gas line coming down. If it was centered in there, if you look up on the top of the building, there's these four ribs right above us, one, two, three, four going across. It would be right in the center of that, where those two ribs are, at 10-foot across.
Does your, in that photograph, does your space enter that girder or does it go past that?
It goes past, but it's fractionally. It goes past just by enough that like, is it enough that it's a big?
Is that one forward or is that?
No.
No, no.
It's at the girder. I was there on Friday and took pictures.
So it's at the girder.
The demise is at the girder.
So what is, you know, what is the width of that storefront then?
I want to say it's 21 feet, four inches.
So I'm curious, what is this document exactly?
You drew it, where did it come from?
It's from his lease, it's from his lease agreement.
Okay.
It's an exhibit to the lease agreement?
It's an exhibit to the lease agreement. The shading is from us. The shading is just so the Board could see what space is being questioned.
Because it's interesting to me because for the amended approval that we gave to SACMAN and as part of the resolution compliance review, I've done, the architectural plans, you know, don't show the door location that is in this.
I don't think that they knew that.
So I think he's using an old version of the floor plan to use in his lease documents. Which, you know, it's close enough. But yeah, I mean, the demising line is per the mode architectural plans that we had seen as part of the site plan approval. But the door is all the way to the east, the way it's, I mean, it's great. They've gotten to the point in the construction now where you can see what's going on with the storefront. And The Big Bear has their sign installed. They're not occupying yet. So you can, you know, really get a sense of the perspective, the size of the sign for each storefront.
Does The Big Bear have?
They have the same size sign that was permitted by a second approval. So 18 inches tall, but five feet long.
But it's over their door.
The question was the size of their storefront is different from us. It's five feet shorter.
So part of their storefront at The Big Bear houses the stairs that go up to the second floor. So his window space is not as wide, but his overall tenant space is, you know, from the exterior western wall to the.
Is that the street where the entrance, top of that window is the entrance to the second floor?
Correct.
Are you saying the door is not going to go here or the door is going to go here?
It is there.
It's there now.
It's there.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Same.
Yes.
And a 10-foot sign would be, it would expand, it would not fit between those two profiles?
I didn't measure those because I couldn't get up there. I think that's like eight feet across. Don't quote me, but it's, it would be just a little bit over them, in the dead center of the space, proportional to both sides.
Just for the record, to help them, am I correct? The door unit, the door is about seven feet in width, and then the two windows, the two window panels next to it measure about 20 and a half feet, something along those lines? Does that sound right?
Well, the entire space across is 20 and a half feet. So the doors are probably, to your point, maybe six of those, 20 some odd feet across?
It might be seven feet.
Sure.
The window space is 20 and a half feet?
Yes.
Yes, it is. That's the frontage. And in fairness, like, the Board should have known, the applicant should have known, like, that was, I mean, to me, I thought it's germane issue that should have been before everybody, and we can see that. We're glad to come back, and we apologize for any misunderstanding. In watching the tape, I saw there was questions about the other tenants, and then there was a lot of cross dialogue between people, and no one ever seen, no one, no one, nowhere is the width of the store identified, and that really was a disservice.
So essentially, it looks like your storefront is a little bit under 21 feet. It looks like visually from this, this display that you've provided, this one, shows that the second and the third storefront are about, the two of them look like they're the same size, but they look like they're bigger than 20 feet.
They are.
They are.
Okay, so those two are bigger than 20 feet, and how much is the bear? Do we know?
Bear is 15 feet.
15.
All right, so the bear is 15 feet, yours is 20 feet, and the two that are in the middle, do we know how big they are? How wide they are?
So my measurement of the architectural plans, which we approved, are about 25 feet and change from the center line of the demising line.
All right, so less than 26 feet. Both of them are less than 26 feet, but greater than 25. Okay. All right. So you're.
Go ahead.
That's interesting because in the initial submission, the frontage was 100 feet on the Cookman Avenue side and 99.8 something on the Oakdale Avenue side. So what happened to the other feet? How do we?
There's brick wall here.
The storefront's glass.
There's a marble pillar on each side.
Yeah. They've done the rest of the facade with, yes. That's why it's not quite.
Their pillars. Okay. All right. So now, you're here. Let's clarify for why you're here, that we're talking about the sign.
Correct.
And I don't know if we're going to talk about the blade sign, but I think we've already talked about the blade sign. But I think that the issue that really lies here is the size of the sign, that we had originally approved at 10-foot. With this new information, it's a question of what do we feel is appropriate as a Board? So that's where we stand. And the original approval was for four 5-foot signs. Foot and a half, tall, 5-foot wide. My proposal is that we go with the 5-foot for everybody, just like we had originally, because it is four storefronts, 5-foot apiece, and a blade sign. For this particular business, there's a blade sign. I'm happy to have other discussions, if anybody feels differently.
Yeah, so for me, I think, for me, the most important thing is consistency. The fact that they are all underneath the, I'm going to call it a soffit.
That's the right term.
Thank you. To me, that's the most important thing. In this case, to me, it seems an issue of branding. Asbury Park Brewery, all written out, is probably going to, for an appropriate sized font, need to be longer than five feet. If it is consistent with the other ones, I wouldn't care if it was a little bit longer, especially if it's taking up less than half of their storefront. My personal opinion.
I would very like, oh, I don't mind if it's a little longer. I think as long as it's located the same, I think it would still look appropriate.
And what length would that be?
I'm not sure.
I don't know. I don't know how they design it, but I personally would like to keep it, you know, in the confines or winding with the, you know, the brick roads if they're on the top. We have, I don't know if that's eight feet. I mean, you know, if you think about, I know we approved five feet all of them, but if it's the, whether that is The Big Bear, it's 15 feet and winding one way, one foot, and here, it's almost 7 feet.
You said it before, it's a forefront?
Yeah. So you're saying proportional to, could you show that again? Could you show that again, Dan?
The pilasters on the front.
Right, between what? Between what line?
The projection.
Yes.
Of course, yes.
Pilasters, yeah.
Okay. So between the two pilasters, whatever that, do we have any idea how big that is?
Let's go.
All right, Donna's going to figure out how big that is. Between, they're saying.
These two?
Between, no. The length of one of these, whatever that is.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to have some idea of what that dimension is.
Are you putting any, I don't know, is it size issue or something? Is it a pretty large?
We do have this. This was after you guys gave me a recommendation. We went back to our signed person, who's also doing, who also did The Big Bear also. This is kind of what it's going to look like, or we moved over a little bit to the left? I don't know if you were able to.
It was submitted to the Board. It's A3. It's the, it's still the old elevation of the building, and it shows the 120 inches by the 18 inches in height. This would be A3. You have to, I only have one of these, so you have to pass it around.
So that's what it would kind of look like. It would be shifted over a little bit again so that it's proportional to those ribs coming down from the building?
What's the dimension of that?
That is 10-foot by 18 inches.
You're following the last meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to find out what, that's not within that range that you were talking about, Dan. Donna, this is not within, it's not within this area. We wanted it between here. Right, so this sign is too large. But can we get, I don't know, Donna, do we have that?
What are we looking for? I'm sorry.
What is the, what are you calling that?
I can measure it.
All right, go ahead.
So I think it's about five feet between the brick bands, the flat spot.
Right.
Each of those is five feet wide. The bricks themselves are, the stripes are, you know, like a slope.
It's a major bend. It's a pause, wasn't it?
Yes, for the mode of translation drawings.
It looks, it looks like if that's true, based on this drawing, that's about right because it looks like it's 20 feet before you get to the next tenant. So what you're saying, Donna, sounds exactly right. So we're back to 5 feet. Here. Oh, here, take a look. That's, that's the 10-foot sign.
Doesn't bother me, but I mean, for consistency's sake.
We also don't know what the future is going to bring, and this two unit may be subdivided into one down the road, so 5 feet.
And you're getting a blade sign.
Yes, there's a blade sign in addition to this.
And I mean, just looking at that, it looks like that can't be much more than 8 feet between the pilasters.
Just another.
It looks like it's 5 feet between the pilasters.
Just another item to consider. When the new tenants on the two middle units come in, are we going to have the same issue that we have here with this?
Well, if they want anything more than 5 feet, they'll have to come. That doesn't mean we have to approve it. It just means that they may come.
I totally understand that, and I totally agree with what you're saying, that we don't want to kick this down the road so we have a problem with the next two tenants either. So I agree with you. I think it needs to be shortened.
If I may, just for, we've been around since 2016, over in our spot over here, and I'd like to think that we've done extremely well by the town, putting it in a very good light. Now, in Cookman, I understand that you guys want to have uniformity across, but if you go down Cookman, there's sizes, there's signs of all different shapes and sizes that everybody else has done.
That's why I want the uniformity, Dan.
On the one building.
I understand, then everybody else has different ones, which, my point is, Vidia, save its Vidia, that's five letters. Big Bear, nine letters. We don't even get to brewery, and we're bigger than that size. So making us try to fit into a small sign is not going to be the best to advertise our product, which brings people to the town. Our neighbors want it. I've talked to my neighbors, they're in our space.
Yeah, that's right.
Unless they're here.
Okay, fair enough. And again, it's bringing a positive thing to the town. Now, if you can't drive by it and you can't see it because it's all smushed, then is that really doing anybody any service?
Hence the blade sign.
What?
Hence the blade sign.
I understand that, but again, if you have a 5-foot sign and the guy has five letters in his name, we have 16.
But signage standards exist in all municipalities, and businesses have different name lengths.
It's just, my other thing is when you go down Cookman, there's different sizes and different lengths to it.
That's happened over 100 years.
Okay, right.
And the redevelopment plan's only been in effect for.
And you have an approved project, and part of the signage is a variance or a design exception to begin, so now you're asking for a further design exception. We have to work with more persons that approve, request to amend the overall project. I get, I get your point. That's what the Board's working. So it's entirely decisional in the Board's. And it's one single building where we're looking for consistency.
Asbury Park also abbreviates nicely into AP.
Oh, I don't know about that, for you, for your brand, Brian.
Okay.
I mean, it's just finally, all the sizes on the front of them are different. So not only is The Big Bear different from us, and so having everybody have to be the same, and we're not in the same from the starting line, is a little different.
And this is, this is the reason for the request for summary leave from the design standards. And considering there's really going to be no negative impact to the neighborhood, I understand that this is an approved package.
So a design exception doesn't need to satisfy the negative criteria. What's the positive?
Well, I mean, I think.
What is, what is the thing that prevents you from complying? That is the threshold for a design exception.
Well, are you able to, like, get, fit your whole name on the sign and to call the people appropriately to your, to your business?
I mean, if we. So can we fit the name on our sign? Of course. Will you be able to read it? Probably not. You're jamming all that stuff into one area that's, this is 5 feet. You're jamming the entire name of the Asbury Park Brewery? I'm 6'4".
Well, whatever, so.
The table is, the table's 6'.
Okay, all right, so it's off slightly a little bit, so that's 5 feet. You're jamming the entire name.
No, so you're in the middle of the folder. Maybe you'd pass that.
All right, so.
All right, so what is it?
So you would need a smaller font size to comfortably accommodate all the letters.
I understand, but in the world of advertising, if you have a smaller sign and they can't read it, it's useless.
Which is why the Board granted you a second sign.
And if you don't like 5, read up like 10.
I'll meet you in the middle like I did last time. I have no problem with meeting in the middle, or making it longer this way, and maybe I can jam it so it says Asbury Park Brewery under it, I'm sorry. But to do all the way across is going to be tough. And again, the whole idea for the sign is for people to read it.
Board want to consider something else to follow?
Not for, not for me, but I don't know, I'm only one vote. I'm only one vote.
Eric, we'll start with you, Sonos.
I think the addition of the second sign makes this, like, makes this bigger sign not as necessary. And I'm also a big believer that people moving at the rate of a pedestrian are not going to have any trouble reading the sign, even if this font is relatively small. You could also work with your graphic designer on creative ways of how the, the kerning of the letters may be condensed. You could abbreviate AP instead of Asbury Park. There's, you know, there's a lot of room for creativity within that graphic design.
Michael?
I am not opposed to a longer sign. 10 might be too much, but maybe like 8, especially because it's a very, this sign is a very simple, unintrusive design. Black and white, I'd be okay with longer, but.
I agree. No one yes to possible.
I like uniformity, and I think.
We approved uniformity originally, and we were willing to negotiate because we thought the size of the stores was twice as long as it is, and so I'm with Barbara on.
Barbara, I guess.
I am with... I am leaving it at five feet?
Jim?
I'm also. They have five feet.
I have no problem with being longer. I have no problem being longer. Essentially, a four-three. So in order to keep it at five, five to...
Eight, I don't know, seven and a half.
So there you go. We got a four-three. And you want a motion? You want a motion? No, no, we'll get there.
No, because you weren't here. To hear. I don't believe that Eric actually gets it.
That's my answer.
Go ahead.
I'm a... I can participate.
You can participate in the discussion. My point being too is I understand that it's five feet. Let's just say those two... You have one big tenant that takes those two middle stores and has one store. You know, they're not being dwarfed, but you know, such a big space that's five-foot. And I can put two signs. Technically, you could put two five-foot signs. I mean, I think the mayor should be a little bit...
Right, but he doesn't have two spaces.
No, but he's bigger than the bear.
He's bigger than the bear.
Right, I understand the logic, yep.
I mean, if we center him, then we just have like seven feet. Seven or seven and a half.
Your application...
Look, I'll let you speak to the size that you want to... That you're gonna ask them to consider.
The original request was 10?
It was 15.
Sorry. So we're back to the original application. The vote was invalid. It was based on the situation. So currently, your application stands at 10. If you want to move to a smaller-sized sign and ask the board to consider voting on it, that's up to you.
I mean, I...
Well, the board's gonna vote on the 10. If we don't get approval...
I would, you know, to... I'm sorry, shouldn't have made that up. I've been here so many times. If it's... If we could, to your point, if we could meet in the middle instead of having 10, not five, seven and a half, we're fine.
All right, so before we do that, we need to open up your testimony process examination.
All right, can I motion for any questions from the public?
Second. You have a question?
Nope. Let's close... Motion to close?
Second.
Yes, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, that's it. And just for the record, I think it was five feet, three inches, just for the record.
Well, whatever was approved.
Everybody keeps saying five feet. It appears that inches count, so yes.
Open a public comment? Motion?
So move. Second, on paper.
All right. Anyone from the public that would like to give any testimony? Any comments? No? Okay. Let's close.
We're not talking.
Okay. Any comments from...
So you would like to characterize your application? You want to characterize it as a request for instead of 10, 15, whatever initially was? You want to make it seven? You want to go up by seven and a half feet anyway?
Is that what you're... It's your request.
If that's a meet in the middle, yes, please.
And the other dimensions would stay the same? And the blade sign would stay the same?
Yes.
All the requirements that we approved would stay the same?
Yes.
Is there anyone on the board that would make a motion for that? I'll make a motion to approve the seven and a half foot one. That will be on the original, okay? And there's... Any second?
I'll second that.
All right, so let's see. Any discussion on a motion before you call a vote? All right. Keep in mind that there are six eligible members. You need the majority for an approval. Who are you?
James Banano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
No.
Jim Henry?
No.
Daniel Shinavio?
Yes.
Mike Gunnin?
Yes.
Chairman Verza?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Oh, yeah, wait. Was that just as to the... Is there a counter-motion then? Because we had...
Well, you've got... There's still stuff. That's not everything. You lose the blade sign.
We have the blade sign.
Because that's part of the whole application.
Right, right. It's everything that was approved last time except the length of the sign. So that it had to be lit and all the things that we had talked about.
I'm sorry, say...
But now we gotta deny the length of the application.
Well, then I beg everyone's pardon. And I would have asked for it to have been bifurcated as to the sign, the fronted sign and the blade sign. So that would be... That would have been the motion, like for keeping the blade side and honoring the five-foot, three-inch sign.
And that's a second.
All right, let's take a break. Can I hear a motion to...
Keep coming back and back and back.
Whether or not you want to... The length of the other side.
Yes.
And it was from what I remember was 36 inches from the brick.
So the sign is 36 inches.
The sign, yes, and right on the brick. So there's not like a couple more inches and then the sign.
No, there's a gap for the...
Yeah, but it's all 36 inches.
Yeah, the idea was we said total projection is 36 inches.
36, total projection, 36 inches.
It was what was on the diagram. It came out 36 inches.
If you approve it, I'll reference the diagram.
Yes, perfect.
There is one thing that I would like to add if it's all right. One thing that did come to mind is that we also would need, besides the right-of-way from the council, I would also believe that we would need... That you would need the approval of the landlord to add that sign.
We had that. We provided it to... I provided a letter.
Okay, we need that.
I had a discussion with the handicappers today.
Okay.
He spoke to Carter and got back and said he was... They were fine with the application.
Okay.
So I can confirm that. I can make that representation.
Okay. All right, then the next motion is to keep the length of the sign as was originally approved at five feet and all of the conditions of the blade sign that was approved last...
Sure, I get that.
Time.
Sure.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Dan.
James Banano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Daniel Shinavio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gunnin?
Yes.
Chairman Verza?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Blade sign?
Blade sign and a five-foot, three-inch sign. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna, thank you. Jack, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, the next item we have on the agenda is Main Street Redevelopment Plan Amendment for the Mercy Center.
Hello, everybody. You want a second? I'm just gonna put a couple slides up so that we can see the sign.
I just want to... Stuff's so bad. It looks so nice.
You don't need to.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
You should like it. Yeah, just gotta project it. In one sec.
Do you still have... We've been noticing prior to any supposition that it was coming from the fellow next door that there's some oil slurs in the crowded presence, which was surprising. And we have never seen it before. We don't... We have no way of knowing, but it seems highly coincidental.
Well, but you could see it.
Oh, I can...
No, I can see it. No, you could see them and on the lot.
Oh, yeah.
You can smell it.
Oh, I can smell it.
On the lot next to you.
Until they do their radial testing, and once they get up to close to our property, if they detect, then we have a problem. We have to talk to them about it. What are you gonna do about this?
Right, yeah.
Because it's infecting our groundwater. We eat vegetables out of the ground. You know, we have a fig tree, a peach tree, a whole vegetable garden. There's something happening, but we are gonna first get a sweep of our property with a tank detector. But I've lived there for 40 years. I don't think we ever have... We have caution.
So did you have an hour?
I do. Sure, my name is Elizabeth McManus. Beth McManus, MCMANUS. I'm the city planning consultant.
I have a little task to make this presentation violate the city...
Yes. Thank you very much. So folks, I'm here tonight to talk to you about another redevelopment plan amendment. This one is also a site-specific redevelopment plan amendment, but I think it's much more simple than some of the others I've come before you in the sense that we're really just taking care of a couple of changes in your Main Street redevelopment plan. And so more specifically, this is an amendment to your Main Street redevelopment plan for the Mercy Center. That's Block 2805, Lot 17, also known as 1108 to 1110 Main Street, also known as the site at the corner of Main Street and Third Avenue. And right here on the cover slide, you can see a photograph of the site. It currently consists of three buildings that constitute a single tract essentially. Here's a survey of the property, just to give you a better sense as to what the existing layout and site conditions are. As I said, it's three buildings, I guess technically two, in the sense that the two buildings are connected towards the rear, but it presents as three buildings along Main Street. It's a property of a little more than a third of an acre. Like I said, it's a corner property at Main and Third. And it's in your Main Street redevelopment plan, but more specifically, it's in the community shopping district of that redevelopment plan. And so the purpose for this plan amendment is really to simply... Overall, I would say it's to facilitate the upgrade of the existing Mercy Center facility. And in order to do that, there are a couple of sort of sub-purposes. The first is to simply permit the use right now. The use has been operating for... Operating there for more than 30 years, but it is not a permitted use in the district. And so you'll see that amendment. We also intend to simply sort of, as part of that, facilitate the replacement of those obsolete buildings that exist on the property. And as part of this facilitation, I would say there's also an acknowledgement of the increased service demand that is being experienced by the Mercy Center that's really precipitated this request to City Council.
If I may, can you check?
Please. Please.
This property received a use variance in 1999, correct?
I don't have that history. It may have. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
It was definitely... They definitely had a proven use variance case for the use that's...
That makes sense, because I'm not sure when it would have been a permitted use in the district. So here's an aerial photograph of the site. You can see the three properties generally in the middle of the screen on the other side of Main Street labeled as Route 71 on Google, just in reflection of the state highway characteristic or jurisdiction, rather. And so, like I said, this is a relatively straightforward redevelopment plan amendment. First and foremost, the plan amendment simply adds the permitted use, and that's a food pantry and a soup kitchen. And that is the type of service. Additional services are also provided by Mercy Center, but that is the service, the portion of what they do on the property that's not currently permitted in the district. We're also going to permit accessory rooftop garden and seating on this specific site. And then the redevelopment plan also includes a handful of enhanced zoning and design standards. So while this redevelopment plan does not include the concept plan, the building renderings that I've put before you in other redevelopment plan drafts, instead of taking it to that level of detail, what this plan does instead is it simply permits the use and states that there are additional... There's an enhanced design that's required and that's done through those several design requirements set forth in the redevelopment plan amendment.
Are you asking... So are you asking to change the permitted use in the redevelopment plan itself?
Yes.
Include this or only on this site?
Only on this property. So the...
So what's the difference of having a variance for that use and doing the underlying zoning like this?
So the redevelopment plan does not permit zoning board of adjustment applications. The redevelopment plan does not permit zoning board of adjustment applications. So if you need a use variance, a height variance, if you were gonna need FAR variance, for example, you would need to seek an amendment to the redevelopment plan. And so that's exactly why the council has proceeded in this way.
But again, this would be specific only to this...
Correct. Correct.
Not having food plant pantries as uses.
Correct, it's just simply to this...
Does the redevelopment plan covers one of those properties?
Yeah, the redevelopment plan, yeah. Essentially, the Main Street corridor breaks it up into a couple different zones. And then specifically, this site, only this property would be permitted to have the food pantry and subject to these additional standards that I referenced.
And the rooftop garden, that's the R-bar next door, right?
Yes.
And that has like a rooftop garden. And so what's the difference?
Well, the R-bar has a very different economic model, shall we say. And so this rooftop garden would simply be for the purpose served by the Mercy Center. It's not associated with an active commercial use. It would be associated with the activities, the services that would be planned for this specific property. It would not be... It would be separate and distinct.
I'm saying they got a rooftop garden. So does it... The permission already there, but because it's commercial use and this is for a, you know...
I don't have the history. I don't have the history with the R-bar use and how that rooftop garden may have come to be. And so what this does specifically permits it so as to ensure that there's no question as to whether or not a use variance would be necessary. Yeah. And then, I'm sorry, just the last thing, because this is my last slide. We'll talk about all the details. But the last thing that the redevelopment plan does is it also creates a site-specific and use-specific parking requirement for the site at one space per 1,400 square feet. So it also has a site-specific parking requirement. And I'm sorry, I know you had a question. I just wanted to get that out.
In your discussion with Dan, you mentioned a food pantry. Is that the same as a soup kitchen? And if not, what are you asking for?
And if not, what are you asking for?
So the city defines those two terms as a single use. There may be separate uses, you know, an organization elsewhere might call itself a soup pantry versus a, or excuse me, a soup kitchen versus a food pantry, but here in the city, they're a single, they're a single use in your definitions. So it's essentially a location where food is provided to folks in need, as opposed to a restaurant where food is provided for sale.
A food pantry generally is not where you provide cooked food. It's generally where you provide food for cooking. There is a substantial difference. Is it the intention to provide hot meals or prepared meals on-site for distribution? Or is it?
Or consumption?
The Mercy Center currently provides a, what would be, I think is commonly referred to as a food pantry. I believe that is their intention, but what this redevelopment plan does, it allows soup kitchens and food pantries which are in existing use identified in the city code to be permitted on the property.
Does that mean onsite consumption foods? Or is it?
It permits soup kitchens and food pantry. Soup kitchens would provide for onsite consumption. I don't believe their intention is to provide for that, but the redevelopment plan simply, the existing city ordinance definition lumps those two activities in one use.
Those are the same.
Correct.
So are you, just for my own clarity, are you saying that today it is used as a pantry?
Correct.
But are we saying that it's not allowed to be used for a food pantry today? But it is being used as that?
It's not that it's operating illegally, it's that the use is not a permitted use in the district. This use previously received approval via the use variance as Mr. Surfer Co. referenced. So it's not operating illegally, but it is not a permitted use. And so any expansion, any expansion would require a use variance.
Legally non-conforming.
The only requirement, the only time, the use variance application granted certain uses of the property, the only reason you would go on to change this is if you have an expansion of uses, because they have every right to continue to operate in the current manner that you're operating. So just make sure you understand that if it's not, if there's not much of an expansion, you understand that, but that goes to your question. It's already permitted to offer the services that it renders at the current time.
But when you're saying that you're looking to expand, where is this expansion gonna happen? Like, when you're saying, I don't know what it means when you say it's going to expand. Are we changing the building? Are we moving the building?
My expectation is the buildings will be eliminated, will be raised and replaced.
So a building?
That is my expectation.
Do we know which building?
All three of these buildings are subject to the redevelopment plan, my expectation.
Three of them could come down.
Correct.
Are coming down.
So you're saying, okay, we have to change online because, you know, you can't, you've got variance in the number of the use.
Right.
The plan is to expand.
We can, we can, so put the parking. What are you gonna be asking? Are we gonna be asking relief from other issues in the expansion? Is it, in other words, is it gonna be bigger than the zoning allows or the redevelopment plan allows?
The Mercy Center has represented to me that they believe their upcoming application will comply with the rest of the Main Street redevelopment plan. However, that application will come before all of you, just like any other application. If they do need relief, they'll make that request. If they need de-variants relief, well, it simply won't be able to proceed. But to the extent that they might need design relief or C-variances, that would come to you and the board would have the ability to weigh that variance relief, just like you have for any other application.
So is it fair to say that what this is doing is facilitating a comprehensive redevelopment of the site that is in conformance with the general outlines of the redevelopment plan? What it is doing is making the use permitted in the future on this one site only?
Correct.
Yes.
Good.
Why is this coming in two steps? Why wouldn't you come before us, ask before a modification to the existing plan at the time that you are presenting a preliminary plan?
So the process for doing so is exactly what's occurred here. They're not able to come to the planning board to request through an application or otherwise to request a change to the redevelopment plan. That's a council action. And so what they've done is they've applied to council, if you will, to make this request. There was a public information meeting in, I forget the date, I'm sorry, in winter of this year, of this last couple of months, where they presented their application. The council supported the proposed redevelopment plan amendment to the extent that they asked me to author the change. And then, obviously, I did so, and they've referred it to all of you. And that's the process that's supposed to occur. This is, tonight's meeting is part of the council's consideration of the redevelopment plan amendment request. And then presumably, if the council adopts the plan amendment, a site plan application will be prepared, and there'll be an application before all of you for site plan approval.
Would you mind going back to where we see the three buildings on the, here?
Sure.
Okay, so are we saying that the new, are we approving those three buildings to become whatever? They could become whatever.
The survey is just simply here for information, because the property lines are unusual. It's not just simply a square property, and I wanted to give folks some more information.
So the property is all of this?
It is, yes, it is all of that dark line. My expectation is that the whole property will be subject to their redevelopment, to their new plan.
Okay. Can you talk about when you're saying that you're looking for some relief and amending the parking standards? Can you tell me, tell us about what it is today and what you're looking for?
Well, right now, the use is not permitted in the district, and so there's no specific parking standard allocated to it. Instead, what we have is a site-specific parking ratio that's applied in the redevelopment plan of one parking space per 1,400 square feet. And what that's intended to do is to accommodate their anticipated parking demand on the property. And I say it in that way, because typically, when we talk about the anticipated parking demand, it's, maybe not here in Esberry Park, where you have so much walkability, but for simplicity's sake, in suburbs, the anticipated parking demand is everybody that's going to come to the property. Here, what we have for this particular use is we have a substantial number of folks that are visiting the property and are doing so on foot or on bicycle. And that's just, I think, common sense to the nature of folks that are visiting the location as a food pantry.
It seems more relevant than you would provide parking for employees and those providing service to the site and necessarily customers. And so the 1,400 square foot is recognizing that it's not a retail operation, it's an employee operation.
So you're asking for, and most of their parking requirement for this.
Clients are coming on site.
Yes, for this particular site.
But not for us. They're not asking us.
It's in the redevelopment plan. I'm not asking for the board to consider relief. It's one of the changes in the redevelopment plan.
The council's job.
Yeah.
The redevelopment plan has a parking requirement. So I guess when you have an update, there's a parking requirement for different uses, actually, in the redevelopment, right? But the use, of course, it's not.
Exactly.
So, but I mean, what is it? So is this 1,400 feet more or less than it is for other uses?
I would say it's gonna require less parking than you would require for other, than are required for other uses.
Significantly less. Which is appropriate. It's totally.
It is appropriate. When you're talking about the 1,400 square feet, like, what is that? Like, is that like that whole?
Of the future building.
Somewhere on that side, somewhere.
No, no, it's of the future building. It's one parking space.
Of the future building, not the lot.
Of the future building.
Correct.
It's the lot or is it the building?
It's the building.
All right, whatever this new building is, and with this lovely deck.
Let's say it's 2,400 square feet, they would have to do two parking spaces. For 1,400.
They're providing more.
Right, exactly.
Don't get hung up on what you're seeing. This is not, that's gonna go away, that's not right. What I'm seeing is the ultimate use of the property.
What I'm, I'll tell you what I'm hung up on, is I get that it's a service, so it's kind of like you need enough parking for the people that are going to be there to work there.
Mostly employees.
Mostly employees.
Yes.
So, okay, so does that discussion come when you come in front of us and say, oh, well, we anticipate this many people will be coming to work here, and we will have the appropriate amount of parking for those people? Is that later or is that now?
That's certainly part of your site plan application. What's before the board tonight is just simply the revised parking ratio for this site, as well as the other standards, asking if you have other comments. So if the board felt that that parking ratio were inadequate, that could be a comment. And then obviously, the next, maybe not obviously, but the next step in all of this, I want to talk about the master plan.
The point is, in your recommendations that you normally give, you say, you request to the mayor and council, specifically address and make sure that the parking demand is adequately addressed, the onsite parking demand is adequately addressed, and whatever the amendments to the plan is.
Well, for the amount of people that are servicing.
We are on our.
Anticipated demand for parking. So typically, I think what you see in this type of use is that you look to understand the maximum number of employees who would be present on the site at a certain time, and you target that number.
Exactly.
And that's where your calculation comes in.
Exactly. That's what I'm looking at.
You're asking us to do one space for 1,400 square feet.
I'm telling you what is in the draft redevelopment plan. The board's role is to either provide comments on the contents of the redevelopment plan or not, but then certainly to make findings regarding master plan consistency. This is the typical master plan referral.
The issue of us is to find inconsistencies or consistencies with the master plan, and such other comments you wish to make, which is why we might add in. And remember, these are recommendations only, they're non-viable to the mayor and council. So the point of it is, is that you don't, we always handle it that if you have a specific point that you want to make a recommendation on, and say, look, just remember, when you're reviewing this for adoption, because they're the legislative branch of government, you're telling them, okay, make sure you don't forget this, parking. Make sure the parking demand, the parking requirement is commensurate with the square footage of the building, the uses on the property, et cetera, et cetera. And that's how you do it. Look, I just saw that, it was thrown out there, I thought they were asking for 1,400 for one space for 1,400 square feet.
Okay.
But of course, it was up there to do something with parking. We said nothing except make sure it's okay.
So make sure that, I have to anticipate that the planners are going to have some input into the creation of the ordinance, the ordinance amendment. And they, with their knowledge, they're supposed to know what your ratio is, what you really need for specific type of uses and so on, and that there's consultants for the city, and they're gonna make recommendations to the city. All you're doing is saying, hey, don't forget this, make sure it's adjusted. Beth is here, she's a licensed planner, she will know that when the presentation is made, that one of the consultants on board is, make sure you got adequate parking for what's gonna go there. And you bring it up to the mayor and council, and it's up to the mayor and council to hear what she says, put it into the plan. And if there's any deviation, a minor deviation or something like that, that could be free for you, a variance or design exception, but not wholesale of, okay, we're only gonna give you 10% of the parking. That would be ridiculous.
This is, I mean, is that the end of your presentation?
That's it. It's a simple, straightforward, short amendment.
Characterize it correctly?
Yes, yes. I should say, I have master plan language that I want to share, but I thought typically the board wants to talk about comments first, then we do master plan, so.
No, the, I mean, the only thing, that was the only thing that I'm concerned about is to make sure that the employees have enough space.
So I have a few, these should be very quick questions. So broadly, though, the bulk and design of the building will match the rest of the redevelopment plan standards, so.
Absolutely.
Floor heights and total height and setbacks. Has there been any consideration that we hope this corner will not end up as a parking lot?
There are.
Okay, good. Yes. Parking not on the.
Parking behind the building.
Yes, I would love to just make sure that it feels like a commercial district form.
Is that something that we should put in there or as a recommendation? Or do you already know that that's?
Parking's not permitted on Main Street. No. You couldn't have parking right along Main Street.
I just want to know for what our recommendation is to the council.
This is tear down.
It's tear down, yeah. So my question is, as long as the rest of the redevelopment plan applies, we're gonna end up with something that looks like what we hope Main Street has.
Correct. And I will say, in terms of third, access from that street is prohibited, so access is required to come from Main Street. So in terms of how that corner will be treated, it certainly cannot be treated with an access in addition to the parking requirements already set forth in the redevelopment plan.
There's no entrance or something.
Correct.
Okay.
I also have another question. You mentioned rooftop deck. Why in this kind of a facility would that be required?
So the Mercy Center is proposing a variety of services at their property. All of the other services are consistent with your redevelopment, your permitted uses in the redevelopment plan. I should say they are considering. I can't speak to what will certainly be proposed. But one of those may be a cafe, as well as outdoor seating discussion areas. And so that's perhaps what that roof area may be used for.
So that conditional use or permitted use that we're discussing now might include a commercial cafe?
It may. That would be a permitted use in your district, though, I want to highlight.
A commercial cafe or soup kitchen on the roof? That's my question.
I don't want to speak definitively, because as you know, this is not a redevelopment plan that provides a floor plan, for example. My understanding is it may include a cafe that would be open to both clients, as well as potentially for public as well.
I feel like we're always asking for more rooftop greenery.
And just on that block, the Pearly Store has second floor outdoor space.
R-bar.
Second floor outdoor space.
It's not unusual.
So it's not unusual. And if this.
They're not open at night.
And we know the work of the Mercy Center is to provide service that often works in discussion groups and support groups, and having an outdoor space to do that could be a really nice addition. Whether that is food service or classes or support groups, seems irrelevant. It seems consistent with the way.
It seems consistent with what's going on there. Anyone else have any statements that they'd like to make from the board? Any questions, Beth? Will you open up to the public?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Because, you know, we're not seeing the property, so for instance, I don't know what that means. You put the whole roof, you have a food kitchen on the whole roof, and I don't know, I don't know where the building coverage is gonna be. Is it gonna go back and it's gonna be that overlooking residential properties now? I mean, that's something to consider.
I think that that, correct me if I'm wrong, that's something that we make a determination during site plan.
Absolutely. I would say, just like any other application, if they put forth a site plan application that raises significant concerns from the board members, perhaps because of impact to neighbors, that would be something that the board would address directly with the applicant during their testimony.
Should be, if you're gonna try and limit the square footage or a ratio of rooftop, where on the rooftop? That could be in the legislation. Now, again, they don't have to do that, because if there's no objective standard that we would be guided by for site plan, and they come in for the entire roof and the plan is silent, how can you turn them down?
If they, that's the point, though. The point is predictability. So predictability for the applicant, predictability for residents, predictability for the city. And so if they arrive after the city council decides to amend this redevelopment plan, if they arrive at the planning board with a site plan application that conforms, our job is to tell them whether or not it conforms, not to, that's our job.
You can't change the standards.
You can't change the standards.
Right, but at this point.
Jack was just saying, like, if it's not in the plan, and they can put it anywhere, but we're on the whole roof, then we can't say anything at that point.
Am I misunderstanding?
Yeah, we can put in a comment.
We can come.
Respectful recommendation that the mayor and council consider the location of the rooftop open spaces be located in the appropriate location.
Facing Main Street.
Right, facing Main Street, not facing east.
You know, as planners, and you're here, so that's the task, you've got to go back and bring that information back.
I think that that's fair. The only thing that we probably don't know is what, what are the setbacks? How far back do you have to? You see, because that's, I mean, but I guess you know what we were talking about, is that, you know what, I don't know what's behind, at this point, today, I don't know what's behind there. So it's like if you have somebody's backyard, you do, you don't want that rooftop to be over that backyard. So it would have to be set back some amount of feet.
Beth, you've anticipated the crafting of the ordinance?
Yes.
So you understand we're asking for an intelligent approach, a logical approach? And I think that's, she hears it. You have to go backwards, so that you have an intelligent, logical, really good repurpose of this problem, to the uses that were permitted, wanting to continue.
I will say that in our discussions in council meeting, we've already addressed neighbors, parking, the issues, and we were in favor of.
I think that.
Andy's point is a valid consideration. All of you care about that, whenever we have rooftops, you know, you don't want people partying away over the people's back. So see if I get.
I think the one recommendation I would have is that when this redevelopment plan comes up for consideration at council meetings, that neighbors be specifically notified, like that this is coming up, and you should be here to hear it, like to see it. Just 200 feet, neighbors should get a notice.
They will.
I know, it's not wired.
They had known, you have to follow the statute, and if you go beyond what the statute says, whether you're enhancing or decreasing the statutory requirements.
No, no, I just said, I'm saying that it would be nice if, when the council is considering this and reading the ordinances, that they notify neighbors that it's being considered at a meeting. With neighbors within 200 feet.
I think it has to be.
No, it doesn't. There's no statutory requirement for redevelopment plans to receive notice.
I think that that's something that is fair for us to request.
Yeah, it's a recommendation that when the council is bringing this up, please provide notice to neighbors that there is a public meeting concerning this project and their properties. That's all.
Okay.
They're gonna be up to the same standard, so.
No, they're, this is not binding.
They're not held to anything. This is just us saying that when this redevelopment is considered.
It's being a good neighbor to.
200 feet neighbors should be.
It's like the city being a good neighbor. All right?
You gotta be careful. We're trading on statutory language. Go ahead, I got it.
All right, so it's that, it's parking and it's location of the roof deck at this point. Right? Those are the three things?
I have rooftop. I have rooftop considerations of the portion and location. Notification to neighbors within 200 feet at the council level. And what was the third?
The third was that parking for the people that work there.
Oh, parking, yeah.
Appropriate parking for the people that work there.
But how do you say anticipated parking demand?
I'm sorry, what was that?
How would you say it, anticipated parking demand?
Anticipated parking demand.
Okay, there you go, anticipated parking demand.
I think the board's comment, if you're looking to put a word to it, the board wants to ensure that the parking on the property or the parking ratio will satisfy the anticipated parking demand.
Correct.
For employees.
For employees.
Correct. Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments by our members on the board?
Or I think it's often said as maximum shift, right?
Yeah, that's another way to put it. Okay, any, can we get a motion to open up the comments to the public?
Second.
Anyone from the public would like to speak?
Just, Kim Vaughn, the executive director of Mercy Center, I just want to say thank you to Beth.
Oh.
Where is my right hand, so it's not too difficult, but truth out we got. So I just wanted to say thank you to Beth and to Yvonne for spending, the councilwoman for spending so much time. I also want to introduce the finance chairman, who's going to have to pay for all of this, Larry Downs in the back, the board of directors, board of trustees at Mercy Center. I want to do quick things because I know the concerns. We've already noticed our neighbors, 200 feet, the neighbors came and testified in support of the application. The rooftop is not going to be, I know this is telling you because...
Speak it to the mic.
My lawyer would say less is more, but I, you know, the questions were already considered. I didn't want you to sit here and think that we hadn't thought about it. We are tearing down 20 to 60-year-old buildings and putting up a new one that's going to be wholly consistent, except for the details put out in the proposed ordinance, with everything the planning board wants. Literally, the answers to all the questions were, what would you like it to be? Because all we really want to do is make a facility that's modern and fits into the redevelopment zone and looks good and fits with the redevelopment zone. We went with a rooftop because we're losing a park. And in that park during COVID, we did all of our group therapy, to your point. Also, one last, parking, roof, rooftop, and neighbors. And so, as I said, the neighbor who's most impacted, not Arbar, the most impacted is the neighbor on Third, which is directly behind us. She testified in favor of our change in the redevelopment plan, that's a matter of public record, at the hearings that we attended. We have a very good working relationship with her, and we have agreed that if there is any screening, that screening, because it will be a space we'll take up from Third Avenue to Arbar, we will make it nice for her. She's moving down from Somerset, she's going to be here year-round, she wants to have the neighbors.
Motion to close public comment?
I know, I can...
Okay. All right, can I, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application with those three items that we had spoken about?
Second.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Eric Gallofo?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Daniel Shenemeo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gunnin?
Yes.
And Barbara Chairman, Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Thank, yes. Just one thing, I'd like to really thank you for all the work that you do at the Mercy Center. It's a phenomenal organization. And the amount of people that you serve blows me away. It really blows me away. Thank you.
If you had, last year, 95,000 people went through that facility.
Incredible.
Two years before that, it was 2,400. And the variance was given in 1999, and that was the problem. The variance dies when we take down all the properties.
Yeah, I get, yeah.
Thank you. All right, do we, going to take a five-minute break before we go into the executive session?
Two.
Five minutes? Thank you.
And I will now take roll call. James Bonanno, Councilwoman Clayton.
He's on.
He's on.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Say here.
Yes. Eric Gallofo?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Daniel Shenemeo?
Here.
Vice Chair Gunnin?
Here.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Here. All right, I guess that, Jack, we have to vote on the resolution first to have an executive session? Go ahead. All right. All right, we have a resolution to be able to go into executive session. Can I get a motion to, can I get a motion to approve?
Move.
Okay, we've got Yvonne and Jim.
And Jim.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, AP TV, we're going into executive session. Please.
I have a vote on that.
Oh, yeah, let's have a vote on this that we're going in.
Can I do an...
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Your votes. I sound.
All right, AP TV, we're going off. Thank you. All right, can I get a, I mean, I guess that we have to...
Call me if you want.
Yeah.
Roll call. James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Eric Gallofo?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Daniel Shenemeo?
Here.
Vice Chair Gunnin?
Here.
Chairwoman Kerzak.
Here. All right, I'd like to, we are back from executive session. I'd like to make a motion to approve, to appoint the Avakian firm as the engineering firm for 2024 for the planning board.
I'll take that.
All right. Michael, second.
Okay, and James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Eric Gallofo?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Daniel Shenemeo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gunnin?
Yes.
Chairwoman Kerzak.
Yes. I'd also like, if we could, to go forward with the resolution?
You just have to fill in the blanks.
We just have to fill in the blanks?
The blank.
Do you like any blanks?
Got it.
Avakian, I have it.
Okay.
Leon S. Avakian Incorporated. I have it here if you need it, what the name of the firm is.
Okay, so, okay, I have it ready to go, so did you do a copy of the...
I have a copy of the name of the firm. What do you need?
Oh, the resolution is...
Oh, the resolution here.
So you just have to fill in all the blanks, Leon S. Avakian Inc.
Yes, it's Leon S. Avakian INC.
In conjunction with compensation, so four. What goes in number two, Jack?
Yeah, Danny?
Yeah.
You said Leon S. Avakian Inc. shall pursuant to the ordinances, et cetera, bill.
Okay.
And then the appointment of them, and number four is their name again.
Okay.
The only reason when they do a contract, I think, to see it before it's submitted or received, I'm not sure it's consistent.
Okay. And I will start with James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Eric Gallofo?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Daniel Shenemeo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gunnin?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Kerzak.
Yes. Just so that all of you also know, is that the transition between Insight and Avakian, and working with TNM also as a conflict, there are about 35 projects that are in flight. So we have to figure out, along with Michelle Alonso, how are we going to bring these to fruition and keep up with the new work? So it's going to be, we're going to have to work on that for the next probably about two weeks to figure out the plan and how to do that. All right. Sorry?
And Beth. Beth's a planner on some of our projects.
And Beth is a planner on some of our projects. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay. All right. 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 All right.